I dreamed of a city called Glory. So bright and so fair. As I entered the gates, I cried for you. The angels were there. They carried me from ancient to ancient. The sight of my soul. Then I said, "I want to see Jesus." He's the one who died for all. Then I bowed low, my knees were dry holy. I bowed. My hands were dry holy. Holy to the Son of God. When I entered the gates of that city, all my love was, they knew. They led me down these streets. I went there. All the streets were too many to take. I saw Abraham in heaven. And I said, "I talk with heart, send me up into heaven." And I said, "I want to see Jesus." For He's the one who died for me. I bowed low, my knees were dry holy. I bowed. My hands were dry holy. Holy to the Son of God. And I bowed low, my knees were dry holy. I bowed. My hands were dry holy. My hands, my hands were dry holy. My hands, my hands were dry holy. Holy to the Son of God. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come to this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. There's nothing worth more like it ever comes close. No things can compare, you're our living home. Your presence, oh. I've tasted and seen of the sweetest of loves. When my heart becomes free, my shame is undone. Your presence, oh. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come to this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. There's nothing worth more like it ever comes close. No things can compare, you're our living home. Your presence, oh. I've tasted and seen of the sweetest of loves. When my heart becomes free, my shame is undone. Your presence, oh. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come to this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come to this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh. There's nothing worth more like it ever comes close. No things can compare, 'cause you're our living home. Your presence, oh. I've tasted and seen of the sweetest of loves. My heart becomes free, my shame is undone. Your presence, oh. Holy Spirit, you are welcome here. Come to this place and fill the atmosphere. Your glory, God, is what our hearts long for. To be overcome by your presence, oh. Your presence, oh.
Glad to be here tonight, good to see everybody else. Happy Valentine's Day. This is looking gorgeous tonight. Have to live anytime. That pink polo is worth money. God's been good to us. Good crowd tonight. We've been running about 80, 85. Hey, listen, here's the back. If Jesus is going after one, I believe we all do too. And at the end of the day, it comes down to this. If you hungry, y'all come eat. If you hungry, y'all come eat. What a blessing to be here. Boy, I got an unexpected Valentine's Day gift tonight. And I was told to use it. And I am going to do that. This is probably the first time I've ever preached one of these. I don't know if you preachers ever have. I doubt you have what I've got. But I was gifted a Clinton Central Bulldog. Calm down, Amber, you're okay. Sweat towel. And I was told to use it, so... Anyway. I say how I live for that. I just feel all warm and fuzzy inside, just saying. Who'd you get in front of that handsome Zach fellow right there? I'm speechless. What a blessing to be here. Let's get ready to go to Lord of Prayer. We got folks sick, we got folks out. This Friday night, Valentine's Day. There's folks doing things. Folks will be here tomorrow night. Got to talk to some people. And I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about our folks. As far as I'm concerned, everybody here is either a Harvard or honorary Harvard. A trap deal. You're misnaming, that's true. What a blessing, what a blessing. Anybody can add a prayer request on the harp.
Richie had surgery Thursday, and also he has a surgery. And he does have a aneurysm in the aorta, but they are just watching him. So remember that, and Karen also maybe is very sick.
Absolutely. Ms. Paige did come through surgery good. Doing her best to recover. Please remember her. I talked to Ms. Renee earlier this morning. Her mom is still in ICU trying to recover. So please still pray for her, pray for Ms. Paige. Anyone else? Absolutely. Anyone else?
We have a friend that just had surgery. For stage four, the snapper that started to start out. So he was giving birth. They started to start their embryos. So they lost their baby.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Amber. Say this, I've been talking some of its V the past couple of weeks. Big bunch of prayer for her. Her best friend, her husband committed suicide right in front of her. Just a little over a month ago. So please, please be a prayer for them. That's one of those things that we don't have words for. And if you think you do, you're wrong. What do we do in that case? We pray for folks and we're there for people. It's needful. Love the present is much better than love the love absent. Anything else on your soul?
So three weeks ago, I had a mass on my lungs. But they did testing this week and they think that it's not a mass. But if you have the moment, they'll let me call it a mass.
Yeah, absolutely. That's closest faith, it's kind of shallow. She got some tests. And got spiritual, well, even got scared. Absolutely, we thank God. Anything else on your soul? Let's all stand if you would. What a blessing to be here. Rob, you and Waylon come here. Say this, what a blessing, Tickle Death, to have Rob back with us tonight. He banged up, but he's here. And I'm Tickle Death. For those that haven't been here in a day or two, we have developed a new way of pray. Not so much a new style, don't worry, we ain't going to roll on the floor like that. But we are going to link up. Let's get ready, if you would. Find somebody, wrap them up real close and real good. Somebody you love dearly. And I'll lead the road when you do, Lord. We thank God for the family of God. And folks, this is us. This is who we have for good, this is who we have for bad. And we need to cherish that and we need to feel that. So let's get ready. Grab somebody up, love them up. Let's pray together. Our Father in heaven, Lord Jesus, we look to you, God. We thank you for this day. Thank you for being so good to us. Thank you for being wonderful. You're the God we need, you're the God we trust, you're the God that we're counting on. Father, Lord, I thank you, Jesus, for the blood applied. I thank you, Lord, for everything we have is because of that blood applied. Jesus, Jesus, we pray for these needs, we pray for these requests. God, we've got folks that are sick, we've got folks that are suffering from cancers. We've got folks recovering, Lord Jesus, from surgeries. Lord Jesus, it's all you. Lord, I thank you, God, for answering prayers. Lord, we miss Paige, we miss Paige, Renee's mom, Rob's. God, there's many, Lord Jesus, and there's prayers being answered, God, that we can't even see. And Lord, I thank you for that. Jesus, thank you for being so rich. Thank you, God, for those here tonight. Help us eat from your table. Help us take another step forward for you. Thank you for the singing and the songs that put on Rob's heart. Jesus, we need you tonight to save somebody, help somebody. Lord, I pray you touch somebody's physical being. Lord, these folks here tonight with physical struggles. Jesus, touch and put your hand. Jesus, touch and put your hands on. God, that's my prayer. Lord, I believe you for what you're doing, I believe you for what you want to do. Lord, help our nation, help our people, Lord, I love you, counting on you. In your name we pray, and all God's people said. Jess, is that baby June?
Yes.
Lord, have mercy, ain't that awesome? I'm telling you, sure, the world, I love that.
I was gonna say, if you stayed full, if you would've told me like five years ago that my husband would be sitting in church holding my daughter, I would've never believed you. Because we didn't go to church together for a very long time. I'm just really thankful.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Here soon, everybody knows we've got baptism upcoming, I'm hoping someday, I've got my fingers crossed. But here soon, we've also got baby dedication coming up. Another prayer answer for Jess, because Rob was kind of excited about it too. Said, hey, we dedicated a republically, we wanted to dedicate baby June. And here's how I've always said this, ever since I've been pastor, there are some folks that want to have public dedication, some want to do it privately. Does dedication save the person? Absolutely not. It's still their voluntary choice to be saved by God's grace. But my goodness, it's good to have insurance. I ain't gonna work a construction job without insurance, and I pray, I pray, I pray that you don't try to live in this world without the hand of Almighty God over life. Days about thirty-five, forty here tonight, you thought that it went over, man. But I'm looking forward to it, really, man. Anybody tonight, if you got a test coming on your heart, you got a song? Bill, you been requesting? Can I sing that one about Jesus?
Who called me up here to sing? Man, good to be safe.
Yeah.
Amen, it's good to be on them. We used to sing, travel around, girls there with Brother Andy for a few years there. Lord, open up the door for all the opportunities. Never regret a mile that we've drive for the Lord. We just thank God for the blessings in our life, but you know, people need the Lord, they have. And I need you worse today than I did in... It just seems like every day we live, we just need you worse and worse and worse. I don't want the girls to remember that. Well, I need Jesus, and you need him too. Along my highway to carry you through. When you're in trouble, don't know what to do. Just call on Jesus, 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 he'll carry you through. Sometimes I'm forced to. I go hard to. And I feel myself slow. Need my owner. And I ask this question, oh, how long? And I hear a voice whisper, whisper, whispers, and you'll be coming home. Well, I need Jesus, and you need him too. Along my highway to carry you through. When you're in trouble, don't know what to do. Just call on Jesus, 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 he'll carry you through. Just call on Jesus, 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 he'll carry you through. Amen. God just good to us, and he hates us sitting heavily places. Wait for a girl to come up and point what we used to sing a long time ago. I remember standing at Dad's bed. As the tears filled the wrinkles on his face. And as I felt his weathered pain, he smiled and whispered. Son, I'm going to live a better way. I'll have eyes that will never fill with tear cry. I'll have legs that will never ache and waver. And a heart that will never break again. I have a heart that will never break again. I have a good, hurting, grieving, vows of sin. Where with Jesus we shall live forever. There's a mansion getting construction, oh, I do. And that spirit go around my heart, oh, I do. All the eyes of the light are letting me open. As they joy and give me heart, I love it. And I can't forget her, oh, I love her. Will we joy to hear the Savior walk in saying? I'll have eyes that will never fill with tear cry. I'll have legs that will never ache and waver. I'll have hands that will never ache and waver. And a heart that will never break again. I'll have a heart that will never break again. Appreciate the years that we did travel together, it's been quite a long time for us, the women and the folks. And God just did some amazing things through all that. Didn't notice, I say God did all those things.
Oh, yeah.
Amen? It's not I that live, Brother Josh, it's the Lord that lives in us today. And I'm thankful today to be saved by the grace of God. Brother, we getting closer to home.
Yeah, every day.
We are, amen? I mean, how many glad you getting closer, grace of God? Yeah, you say, brother, Bill, why aren't you out there singing as much? I'm still singing, but we do a little more preaching, amen? Amen? God's good, yeah. Say, you got a name?
Yeah.
Praise God. I mean, how many glad you going, praise God? Been set free, saved by the grace of God, I'm thankful that we're on that way.
Yeah, we are.
I mean, praise God, how many glad you going that way, praise God? Brother Josh is good. Yeah, praise God.
Yeah.
He said, well, brother Bill, why you trying to work? I tried to work up with that, praise God. Woo, praise God, that ain't already been worked up on the cross. The work's done, praise God. Hallelujah, praise God, sometimes we'll just hold off on the shout about it.
Yeah.
And I thank, I thank Brother Josh for saving me.
That's right.
Amen? I want this way down like old Paul did, amen? I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ.
That's right.
This is the power of God, change me, praise God, how many been changed tonight? Amen, that you saved been changed.
Yeah.
If you been saved, been changed. And we got a Savior to lift up tonight, and I praise him for everything he's done in my life. God's good to me, Brother Josh. Blessed be, blessed be, I tell you, I used to say the best is yet to come. And the Lord does me one time, he said, son, the best has already been there.
Yeah.
He just comes back and get that what he says. Amen? I say, let the glory roll.
Yeah.
I was good to us, amen? Yeah. Praise God, how many glad you saved? God's just good to us, come on, Chase, I have this one thing, praise God, just for a minute, amen? How many joy, joy, some brother Roberts, they walking the door? They coming this way? Coming to the house of God and enjoying the goodness of God, loving God with the belly.
Yeah, boy.
Praise God, God's good to us. Amen, Chase, go ahead. I'm gonna sit down. Amen, bless you, brother, appreciate you, brother Chase. I appreciate God's people, amen?
It's...
I appreciate it. I appreciate the Holy Ghost tonight.
Yeah.
They let you know, praise God, you're His. They let you know that. I was gonna let the redeemer, the Lord say so. The Lord has redeemed our hands to the end of many, praise God, I'm letting your devil take a shot. God's good to us, go ahead, Chase. Man, God's good to us.
Can you run, run?
I tell you, we got it tonight, church, amen? We got things tonight.
That's right. Moving on church.
Yeah.
Praise him, Lord, bless him.
Say, I'm thankful, I understand. God's been so great, I just want to thank him for his reading, for his prayers, for so many prayers. I have a thing to mention. The John again, he's a prayer, and I just want to thank the Lord for who he is, for his care, and mercy, whatever. He's protected me from so many things, whenever I didn't know that I was in danger, and he's still watched out for me, he protected me. He's just been so good to me, and I know that no matter what we go through, I can always trust him. I'm just so thankful to be saved, and thankful for who he is.
I'm a little child, I'm a little child. To serve the Lord. And as I grew, I tried to win his pardon. I stood by me, so faithful, I tears have come and gone. And I don't believe he'll fail me.
Calm down.
Just a few steps from home.
Go ahead. That's right.
I don't believe he'll fail me.
Amen.
It's been a long, long journey, but I've never been alone. I can see others on here, of my own, coming for me. And though I don't believe he'll fail me, just a few steps from home. So here I stand, a journey's end, I know it won't be long. Until I shall be in that country, the land it won't be gone. Should be fair, he here, when I'm so near, and all my dreams and...
Nobody promised, that's right. That's right.
And he's closer than any other. And though I don't believe he'll fail me, just a few steps from home. It's been a long, long journey, but I've never been alone. I can see others on here, of my own, coming for me. And though I don't believe he'll fail me, just a few steps from home.
Anybody else? This night, you got a song on your heart tonight? Thank God for your nothing tonight, don't you?
Amen.
What else? You got your bibles tonight, like Luke, there's two places we know Luke this evening is. Luke chapter twenty-one, Luke twenty-one, James one. Luke twenty-one and James one, if you look there with us tonight. Luke 21, James chapter 1, if you able to stand together and look. Luke 21, we'll start there this evening if you have your Bible. Glad you're here. I pray you've already enjoyed being here. Luke 21, if you have your Bible tonight. Let's take a look, starting verse 12. Luke 21 at verse number 12. "But before all these they shall lay their hands on you and shall persecute you, delivering up to the synagogues and into the prisons, being brought before kings and rulers for my name's sake; and it shall turn to you for a testimony, said with therefore in your hearts, not to meditate before what you shall answer. For I will give you a mouth and wisdom which all your adversaries shall not be able to gain save nor resist; and she and you shall be betrayed; both the parents and brethren, kinfolk, friends, and some of you shall they cause to be put to death; and you shall be hated for my name's sake. But there, and please catch the next two verses, but there shall not a hair of your head perish." I wanna say this, and I pray you hear me. Nothing comes to you unless you go through God first. And that's, I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna break something real, real difficult tonight. Because I know the people that we are. Everybody all right?
Yeah.
I know the people we are. We're a tribe people, we're persecuted people. We are a people going through hard times. And then we look at the hard times we're facing and we're saying, "Boy, God's allowed this?" I wanna say this, if God's only God in the good, He owes a lot of people apologies. Surely, surely, if God's allowed it, He'll break you through it. Matthew 21, verse 19. Matthew 21, verse 19. "And your patience possess your souls." "And your patience possess your souls." James 1. James 1, verse 2. James 1, verse 2. My brother, count on joy when you fall into dangerous temptation. And you need to know this. 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 That the trying of your faith works patience. But let patience have her perfect work. Why? That you might be perfect, that you might be matured, that you may be entire wanting nothing. And if any of you lack of wisdom, let him ask of God. Amen? I hope you'll be seated tonight if you would. Looking forward to preach this evening. We need you prayers. I know we usually pray, but I'm counting that you've been praying for me and I've been praying for you all week, sure as well, day in, day out. And I appreciate it. We're a church, so I pray one with another. One for each. I wanna preach three things tonight, if it's fine with you. Best of my knowledge, I got four messages on the heart, and we'll get through them one way or the other this weekend. And I'm looking forward to what God has in store.
Amen.
Well, what do you need to do? You just need to have church, that's what you need to do. It'll help you that way. I wanna preach this thought to you tonight. I wanna give a notice of something. How many of you have heard that saying, "The patience of Job"? Anybody heard that? I got my look in and I got this studying. You look in the book of Job, you don't find the word patience one time to the best that I can find. One single Terry time, the word patience in the book of Job. And then we have the quote saying that, "Well, you've got the patience of Job." I wanna preach this title to you, and I wanna repeat it a couple of times for you. Just because you don't have the word doesn't mean you can't do the work. Just because you do not have the word doesn't mean you cannot do the work. Third time, because it's good. Just because you do not have the word. Well, Chase, I don't have patience. Just because you don't have the word does not mean you can't do the work. Amen? Amen? I wanna look at the human side first this evening, if it's fine with you. We look at the book of Job, and that book amazes me. And we've spent time here at this church going through the book of Job, at least attempted it. We think, when we were having men's Bible study, Josh took us through a great deal of the book of Job, and it was wonderful, and I appreciate it. But man alive, we took time and we dissected Job's wife, her testimony through the book of Job, and found difficult sayings there. But there's times you reach an age where you feel like you've been through it all and you've seen it all, or you've experienced it all. And surely to God, by the time you're 18, you won't have to go through too many things. And I learned of a couple today. Eighteen-year-old and seventeen-year-old in high school, got pregnant in high school. Well, Chase, there's many folk that go through that. Absolutely. Six, eight weeks pregnant, whatever she was. Got up this morning, getting ready for school, wasn't feeling well, or whatever the case was. She had a miscarriage this morning. Seventeen-year-old girl. And there's times that you go through a lot at a young age. You just feel to yourself, "Well, I won't go through much more because I've already been through a lot." And then there's times that you reach 25, you reach 30-year-old, "Well, I've already been through a lot." You reach 35, and you reach 40, and you've already buried loved ones, and you've buried families. Man alive, that's not too much, that can catch you off guard. You hit 50s and 60s and so on, so forth. And does it not amaze you that life always finds a way to knock you off your feet? Amen? I wanna take a look at this. Job was not a young man by this point. His wife, not a young lady at this point. But, and they raised at this time, I believe, 10 kids. I'm not just talking about they were young and they had babies, but I'm talking about these kids are young adults. They went through the teenage issues. They went through all the stuff that leads up to young adulthood. Man alive, there's nothing that could come across the corner that we would not see coming. If you haven't picked up the tune of Tinnerah yet, I wanna preach about two things tonight. I wanna preach about patience, and I wanna preach about trust in God. And I wanna say this, both of those are hard to do. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Man alive, God started laying this in my soul. And I said, "Boy, that's gonna be difficult." But I'm looking forward to preaching it nonetheless. I wanna say this to you. We take a look, and we see Job, and we see that his kids have started doing the party life. We see, and I want to remind you, and I pray it's okay that I'm preaching slow tonight. I know we've got my kid, your kid tired, and everybody's tired for our out. But I do believe this, if they were staying up a little bit for Jesus, it just would. But I wanna give you this tonight. We see that there's a daddy that's worried, and there's a mama that's worried. I wanna put you in the time period that we're getting with Job real quick. This is not the time of grace. God was on his people, but He was not in his people. I wanna say this, everyone in the world is blessed. Everyone in the world is blessed. Everyone in the world is blessed by who? They're blessed by God. Well, Chase, they don't know God. And I hope you get under this, the atheists are blessed. I wanna say this, the same worshippers are blessed. Both hypocrites, homosexuals, Democrats, Republicans, everybody's blessed by God. If you woke up with a breath this morning, you are blessed. Amen? Boy, listen, I know why you didn't like that with that same in fact. Listen to me today. Can I tell you, though, we're looking at a time in Job where people believed on God, but God had not moved in them. I wanna say this, there was not. And hear me, there was not a King James Version Bible. There was not a missionary Baptist church at 357 Alhambra where they could go to and they could link up with brothers and sisters and faith, and everybody could enjoy worshiping together. This is way before all that. And to think that we're gonna have kids and that are getting ready to create, and we're getting ready to have kids that are gonna enjoy the party life. Man alive, there's no God, that there's no church that we can go to, Jerry, that we can enjoy Jesus, and we can bear one another's burdens. I wanna say this, and please hear me. I know that you're going through a rough time. We've got some in the church that are going through harder than others, and we've got some that are on the mountaintop. Boy, the church is a mixed bag of battlings and blessings. But can I say this to you? I pray you hear me tonight. It should bless your soul that you can come to your church and you've got somebody that'll get under you and help you carry the load. If you're on the mountaintop, man alive, listen. A few weeks ago, I went back, and Gloria, tell them, I talked about it. I went back and I watched the service where Addie and Cruz got saved. Courtney and some of the rest, the Harbers came down and prayed with the girls. Man, I got to thinking about that. Isn't it something in the family of God that when you don't even know people, there are people that when you're celebrating, they'll help you celebrate? Man alive, this is some things that have amazed me just in thinking about it today. I can remember when Karen, my mother-in-law, was sick a few years back, and we were still living there with her. And so, the Harbor had bought flowers for her because she was sick, and she didn't even know us that well. Didn't know the Harbor that well at that time. Man alive, Amber and Zach were sick, and the church sent them a card. Man alive, the way that the churches love Charlie and the family. And boy, the list just goes on and on and on about how the family of God has been there, one with another. And I'm gonna preach a little deeper out there because it's just us. Boy, everything that Brian and Jessica have been through. Man alive, Brian, Jess, I'm thinking of the dead. Man alive, it happened in 2020 to 2025 instead of happening in Job's name. Because could you imagine going through all that by yourself? Man alive, we take a look, the code of Caitlin. Could you imagine going through that by yourself? Boy, we take a look. I remember when Faith lost the kids. Man alive, Courtney, I can remember this real well. Courtney said, "What does Faith need?" I said, "Well," I said, "sometime tomorrow." I said, "You just come by, you talk to her. I love all her texts and requests. I don't even think she'll want any company tonight." And I had barely had time to pull in my drive, and Courtney pulled in right behind me. And I looked at her, and I said, "Sis, I don't know what kind of shape she's in." And she said, "I do not care." And she went in my house, and she grabbed my wife, and she just hugged her, and she just loved all her. Boy, listen, hey, man, that don't have to bless you at all, but that blesses me. Boy, listen to me today. And you go past it. I'm his pastor for a minute. Boy, you take a look at ordination. Man alive, James Taylor, I can't tell you the times. Rob Ho has come to me and said, "Man, what's it gonna take to get James? Because he's already blessed me so much as it is." Man alive, you take a look. Now, how much the Harbor has helped one another. Man alive, you take a look, Miss Rhonda, with everything with Miss Dolores, and everything with your family. Boy, you take a look at all the times that we've been there. Because somebody helping preach tonight. Have we been there, one with another? You can take it, or you can leave it, but this church has not allowed you to suffer by yourself. Boy, listen to me today. I checked in on Larry every day just about him. And I'm not just reminding him that I love him, but I reminded him that he's way too handsome to stay down this long. Boy, listen to me today. I'm telling him, be on any shadow of a doubt. You can think you've got it the worst in the world, and you've got it difficult no doubt. But at some point, you're gonna have to stop and take a praise break because you're not going through it like Job went through it. You've got the presence of God. You've got the Word of God, the people of God, your last in the middle of your distress.
Amen.
That's right. That's right. Amen. All this tonight. Amen. We take a look, and we see Job's trial, if you have. Hey, Pat, and he's gonna lose his kids. He's gonna lose his job. He's gonna lose all these things. Man alive, and then he's gonna get sick on top of that. And man alive, just to be sure, there is no one. I want you to hear me tonight. I've got, hey, I've got three things to get through, and I've got no plans on part two. Amen, and amen, and amen. Listen to me, when Central Bulldog tells the word. Can I say this, babe? There are some things that absolutely may go sick in the house of God and outside the house of God. You think about when you've been going through trials, when you've been going through troubles, and somebody walk up to you, Charlie, and say, "God's God. God's gonna take care of it. It'll be all right." And then there's some of you, "God." If one more person looks at me and says, "It'll be all right." If one more person says, "Just keep the faith." Boy, I just, how turn Pentecostal just... Boy, listen to me. Can I say this, and I mean it with every bit of love I've got in my soul. Job had no one, his wife had no one to look at him and say, Romans 8:28, "For this we know, that all things work together for good for them in love, the Lord, earth, the call, and heaven." Job had no one to look at him and say, "God's God." Job had no one to look at him and say, "Just keep the faith." Boy, Job didn't have his damn kids to come pray over him. Job didn't have a mass, little church go bring him to come around pray with him. Man alive, can I ask you something? You take a look at the battles that you've had inwardly, in your family, in your finances. How many of you would be in much worse shape if you'd been left alone with your thoughts? Anybody in the house? My God. Hey, I'll even go deeper than that. If you've been left alone with your thoughts, how many of you would not be here tonight? I'm talking about in church. Anybody? How many of you would not be on this planet? Anybody in the house? Boy, listen to me today. I don't know about anybody else in the building, but I'm glad God put some people in the life field. Man alive, the captain has told me from time to time. Boy, I'm preaching real deep tonight. See, I'm gonna get to the shower in a minute, just get your throat spray out. We'll get there. Boy, listen to me. For about a year and a half, my anxiety popped no six. My anxiety's been about as bad as it ever has been. And for about a year and a half, and y'all know, if y'all know. If you don't know, you don't need to know. Boy, for about a year and a half, I've sat on that pew every Sunday morning with my mind in the devil heaven cell. They need a better pastor than you. They deserve a better pastor than you. Maybe it's your time to resign. And for the first 10, 15 minutes of church, sat right there and just sit, and just sit, and just sit. Boy, after about 10, 15 minutes, I get past, the spirit come down, and I'm good to go. You wanna know what I thought, Jerry? I thought, "Man, I'm good enough," and then nobody can see it. And boy, Caitlin and I, Caitlin, Dakota and I, had a conversation one night. I was over at the house, and she looked at me, and she said, "Every Sunday morning, for months now, I'm seeing that on your face." And she said, "Brother, the only thing I knew to do was to pray for him." "Hey, I wanna help you. Hey, there's a couple of y'all in the birdish shouting already. Hey, can I give you some help right here? You ought to be thankful. You ought to be thankful." Hey, I'll preach where it's at. You ought to worship that you've got people in your life, healthy people, spirit-filled people, people that can get a hold of God, that can see you when you're trapped in your faults, see you when you're getting devoured, and they can reach your hand down, and not just have the ability to, but their will is to put a hand down and to make your dear friends happy and pull you out, amen? Ah, Job didn't have that. Ah, Job didn't have that. His wife didn't have that. Oh, listen to me. His nieces, nephews didn't have that. Oh, I wanna preach where it's at. His grandparents didn't have, his mom and dad didn't have that. Don't, hey, I wanna preach this. Don't you dare act like when Job lost 10 kids, that his grandparents didn't lose 10 grandkids. Don't you act like when Job lost 10 kids, that his father-in-law, mother-in-law didn't lose 10 grandkids. Boy, I wanna say this to you. I wish we'd take a little praise break right here. Boy, there are people that are hurting worse than you are, but aren't you glad you've got people that'll help you when you're hurting? you've got people that'll help you when you're hurting? My God, heaven. We went over little Joe's viewing. Went over there, wrapped old Stephen up and wrapped Joe's mama up. Man alive, just held Roger, Roger just bawled. And boy, listen to me. There were people that just walked right by him and Miss Katie. Boy, I wanna say this to you. Some of us, because they didn't know who they were, I've got no doubts of that. But can I give you something to rejoice about? When there are people that have walked by you and were hurting, aren't you glad for the people that did not walk by you? They might have walked by you and were struggling. Because this is what you signed up for. You wanted to be a parent, this is what you signed up for. You want to be a husband, this is what you signed up for. You want to be a step parent, a step sibling, this is what you signed up for. You want to be a pastor, this is what you signed up for. Well, you got grandkids, this is what you signed up for. But I'm glad to God, Miss Karen, that boy, there's a God that even though I've signed up for what I'm going through, He'll still never leave me and He'll still never forsake me. Can I preach to you? Some of our struggle, Landon, it's self-inflicted, meaning we brought it upon ourselves. But Cory, if there's something I'll shout out, even the self-inflicted struggle, some of us have got anxiety that we bring on ourselves, panic that we bring on ourselves, stress that we bring on ourselves. But hurts is thankful for the things that you bring on yourself. There's still a God that'll help you through it. It's been too long, Joe. Thirty-some chapters. Now let me tell you what you should have done differently. Thirty-some chapters. This is your fault. And you don't know what Joe had to say to all that, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. Hey, can I preach to anybody that's struggling about the past? No matter how much you hate it, no matter how much you know what you could have done differently, the past is over. Can you hear me? The past is over. And I'm preaching to all of us, I think I counted like 44 here at night. I'm telling you, these things I wish I could have done differently. I sent it to a couple of decks this evening. There's a couple of things I wish I could have done differently. I really do. Amen. And don't you worry about all that, I ain't gonna get into it. Boy, listen to me. And no matter how much, bro, I hate the past, how much I struggle with it, the past is over. I wanna say this to you. Any man who put his hand in the plow, Jessica Lauren, lucky fact, is not fit for the kingdom of God. Hey, I wanna say this, why? Hey, listen, I'm getting ready to get off number one and go number two, but I can't do it if you don't come with me, so come with me. I wanna say this to you. I wonder why, little sis, I wonder why. Bill Fields comes in, I start calling people, little sis. Listen to me. I gotta wonder why Joe went as long as it did. I gotta wonder about why Charles' wife's had to go that long. It don't need to be that long. We don't need that much of sad story. Robin, hey, I get it, I get it. Can I tell you something? Boy, Miss Debbie, I just about believe it. It took 40 something, amen. It took that entire book, Josh, just to get Joe to the place. You need peace instead of questioning. You need peace instead of confusion. Boy, I'm getting ready to give you more than you ever lost. I'm getting ready to bless you more than you ever had. I'm getting ready to heal your hurt. I'm getting ready to bless your marriage. I'm getting ready to take it from a valley of death to the mountain of rejoicing. But you've got to get ready for that. You've got to get ready for that. And it's gotta be a shout that not only that you can shout with. Hey, help me now. It's not just a shout that you can be ready with. If I got heaven wrecked, it's gotta be a shout that your wife can shout with. Boy, having with all those chapters where we healed together. Hey, Harbor, we might not have it in us to be patient for 39 chapters. We might not have it in us. Boy, be patient until the rain comes. We might not have it in us. I say, Cory. We might not have it in us. Keep waiting. But just because we don't have the word, doesn't mean we can't do the work. Every day that you say you can't go another one, guess what you're doing? You're going through another one. I wanna, I wanna remind you. I can feel Tony Perry is looking over his shoulder at him. Listen to me this evening. Luke 21 and 19. Catch this with me, with you. Luke 21 and 19. In your patience possessed your soul. In your patience possessed your soul. I wanna say this to you, and I don't know who I'm preaching to, but I feel like I got about 80% of them, getting ready to need 100. I'm fine with 80 for the Joe part, but I'm getting ready to need 100. Listen to me. I don't know what prayers are waiting on to be answered. I don't know what prayers are thinking that are denied. I don't know what prayers are feeling like are ignored. But this is what I'm telling you. I believe with all my heart that we've got people, Cory, that their lack of patience has ate up their soul. And I want to give you the, Chase, what do you mean by that? Sarah, that sounds like spiritual lingo. I won't tell you what I mean by that, Amber. Their lack of patience has ate up their faith. Their lack of patience, Amy, has ate up their joy. Their lack of patience has ate up their peace. Their lack of patience has increased the frustration weight. Their lack of patience. Hey, boy, it's getting quiet here, so I'm starting to feel like I found somebody. Listen to me this evening. I've gotta wonder how many tense moments, how many hard moments at the house, how many hard moments at this house, how many uncomfortable times between your kids and you, how many uncomfortable moments between your spouse and you, how many uncomfortable moments at the house of God? Man alive, we're there because the lack of patience, when God, thy God, how this happened, God, when's it going to end, God? God, this, why, when, where, why, when, where, and how? We get through one thing and another thing hits. We get through one thing and another thing hits. I wanna say this to you today, have to leave this with all of my heart. How many of you, boy, help me here. How many of you are saved? Anybody saved in the house? He has possession of your soul. Boy, I feel like preaching that right there. He has possession of your soul. Wow, 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 that feels good, this preaching that. Hey, Jay, I'm telling you, there's a coming. There's coming a day, Debbie. The king up there, Jerry. Cory, he's gonna call my name. And when he does, Larry, he's not calling Chase Lane. James Kelly, he's not calling Rashawn Savage. I'm telling you, he's calling that name that he possesses. I'm telling you today, he's got your soul that belongs to him. I wanna preach this stuff right now. Stop ruining God's possession. Lost your show, boy, listen to me. I've been to tickle death, Bill, past few weeks here at Harbor. And y'all are getting ready to help me right here at church. Worship's been real thick around here past few weeks. I told Courtney and Joshua that I said, they spend folks, raise their hand, worship that I never seen the whole time I've been here at this church. And boy, I say hallelujah for that. I say glory for that. Boy, but can I tell you something? Hey, hey, just like you're praising him through this trial is the same way you're gonna have to praise him through every trial. I say glory. Hey, I feel shit. Well, help us, Lord. Amen, I need to move on. Hey, can I give you this? If he possesses your soul, y'all let him possess your heart. If he possesses your soul, y'all let him possess your mind. Brother Charles is working, I was thinking to you today, I was looking at the message. Brother Charles is working as a tow truck driver right now. Hey, can I let you know something? It does not matter how many times you say you've paid that bill. If Charles pulls up in your driveway, that sucker gone. But I got the payment, I told him. I said, 850 million. Stay away from it. I got a dog, it won't bite. But I gotta, hey, can I tell you something? There is nobody that's ever got towed because they weren't paying taxes. There's nobody's ever got towed that went up to the towman and said, I'd like to see you. I didn't have nothing else the last day. I wasn't wanting to go nowhere, I ain't gotta take the kids nowhere. Man, I was sitting around thinking, oh, I could use it if somebody just had my tow, I'd be good. I really do. Man, sir, you look good, you smell good. I bet you've got a good living, you sure, you got kids, I sure do. Hey, man, hey, can I tell you something? The Bible says in the book of Ephesians, chapter number five, let him that stole steal no more. Hey, can I tell you what a lot of people think the towman is? They think he's the devil himself. I don't believe that about Charles, Holly, now. As long as he stays away from 850 million, how many people are going to shout, God? If he comes 850 million, amen, praise the Lord. Can I say this to you? I gotta wonder how many times old devil man's come through. Hey, man, because your lack of patience and your presence of frustration, your lack of patience and your presence of worry, your lack of patience and your presence of your feelings and your thoughts, the old devil towman's coming up and he said, hey, you don't want your calling anymore. Sir, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take it. Hey, you don't wanna take faith seriously anymore, I'm gonna take it. Hey, you don't wanna take your songs seriously anymore, I'm gonna take it. Hey, you don't wanna take raising your hand and worshiping seriously, I'm gonna take it. Hey, some of y'all got happy tears. Hey, you don't want them anymore, I'm gonna take it. Hey, listen, if there's something drives me nuts, Holly, I mean, man, I don't know why it is wrong, but every time the spirit comes by, I laugh. And I promise I'm not mocking nobody and I ain't making fun of nobody. It's a joyful laugh. And can I tell you, that eats me a lot sometimes. Because I look at people and they're giving me this. And I look at people and they're giving me that. Boy, they're gonna drop it to me. I went to God and I said, take it away. I don't want it. And there's been times, the old towman's come through, Karen. And he's taking away the things that God has given me. Boy, listen to me. And I mean it with all of my heart, with all of my soul, youngins, you hear me? Boy, youngins, how do you get on the altar? And can I tell you what you're doing when you get on that altar? You're not just there for looks and you're not just there so everybody can be proud of you when you get down and pray with those folk. Don't you dare let the devil take that away from you. Can you hear me? Boy, listen to me today. Hey, Harbor, God's got us in a good place right now. And I want you to get ready, amen, in this. It does not have to be a season. It does not have to be a season. If you don't let the towman come by and take away what God's given us, we can grow and we can stand. Hey, can you get ready, amen, in this? Nobody's got patience like God does. I'm gonna go real short, my second, I'm gonna hit third one. Nobody's got patience like God does. That Old Testament, got 4,000 years in it. God waited 4,000 years just so he could watch his son step off the porch of heaven and come to earth. Hey, I wanna help you right here. None of us at first had experience with anything that happened 1,000 years ago. Well, Chase, what all did God watch for 4,000 years? He watched the fallen man. He watched wickedness in the Garden of Eden, in the Garden of Eden. He watched Sodom and Gomorrah. He watched a dad, Jessica, stand in front of the door and said, if you'll leave my home alone, I'll give you my daughters and you can do whatever you want with it. He watched, he watched in the days of kings, when one woman in a day of famine looked at another woman and said, Avery, said, hey, we're gonna eat my child, and tomorrow we'll eat your child. And Jesus looks over at God's act and he says, can I go today? Can I go? Time is a hand, Father. Time's worse than it ever has been. And Jessica brim, God said, it's not today. And you are, as Israel loves God, and as they reject God, as they love God, and as they reject God. And then we go through 400 silent years and it's time. And then, are you still with me? I wanna preach this, and I pray. God went through so much patience. Please hear me tonight. God went through so much patience to get you, you and I, all to endure so much just to keep what he has given us. Chase, are you saying I can lose my salvation, no sir, no ma'am? But can I tell you what you will lose? Coretta, Psalms, chapter 51, you'll lose the joy of it. Hey, I've been on some very hot and heavy, I ain't gonna lie, I'm a bit about it. And I'll tell our youth, you need to be on your friends too, hot and heavy. Well, why? We've had some youth that ain't been here in weeks. Hey, I'm gonna preach this, and I believe it's right by the book. Once you give up your seat, it won't be long you'll give up your joy. And it won't be long you'll give up your peace. And I wanna give you a biblical reminder. Serve your Creator in the days of your youth. 4,000 years. Can you hear me? Lord, I don't know if we're gonna make it, shout, something's gonna happen now. 4,000 years. And then I've gotta wait 33 more. 4,000 years of baby cries. Some of y'all ain't sure. Who do you think you're talking about? 4,000 years, and then Larry, I've gotta wait 33 more years. And then right before Amber, I can have Charles. Right before I can have James. Right before I can have Faith. Right before I can have Landon. God says, I've gotta watch my son, Nancy, that has never done anything wrong. I've gotta watch him be spat on. I gotta watch him be abused. I've gotta turn my back on him just so I can have bricks. Acts, chapter number two comes. 33 years. 33 years, 400 days. Day of Pentecost, power of God falls, Charlie. Hey, can I ask you something? How many people got saved on Day of Pentecost? Anybody remember? Talk to me. Day of Pentecost, 3,000 gets saved. Can I give you this? 4,000 years is still less than God got waiting 4,000 years. 3,000 people is still less than what God waited for 4,000 years. Hey, I'm gonna preach something real firm and real strict. I'm preaching man, preaching faith, I'm preaching everyone in this building. Everyone watching, I'm gonna preach to everybody. There's times we feel like we get the short end of the stick with God, but I'm telling you, beyond any shadow of a doubt, we do not have the short end of the stick with God. Well, who's got the short end of the stick? I'm gonna go into my last one, can you handle it? What did God have to do? Hey, can I ask you something? How many of you believe that from the foundations of the world, God had the whole Bible written out in his mind? I do. So you don't know what he had in his mind? In the Garden of Eden? Let patience have her perfect work. You don't know what he had when Abraham took Isaac upon Mount Moriah? Let patience have her perfect work. Do you all know what God had in mind when so much evil, wrong was come up and then God knocked And then God announced, "Oh, God, and Zach, he's gonna destroy the whole world." But Genesis six and eight, Nancy Lunsford, Noah found grace in the eyes of the Lord. Do you all know what God had in mind? Let patience have her perfect work. Can I ask you something real quick? 'Cause I feel like this is getting deeper all the time. How many of you talk to yourself? Some of y'all lying. I was having a real good conversation with Chase this morning about work. And it hit me, something real good hit me about work. And I said, "Hey, Chase, that's a good point." And Chase said, "Chase, you do realize that you're just complimenting yourself." And I said, "Well, yeah, I do." And then Chase said, "Chase, you do realize you're getting ready to run late 'cause you're sitting in a vehicle knocking yours out." And I said, "Well, Chase, that's a good point." And I got out the park, and I said, "Chase, we have reached a brand new level," and say, I'm gonna go into the third one. Apostle Paul was a full-grown man before he ever got saved. Can you hear me? Thought he was right though. Everybody will stand up if you would. Everybody stand up, everybody, everybody stand if you would. Stick both hands way up there. Put your hands down. Look over to your neighbor and say, "He's got one more to go, we can do it." God bless you, Sam. Some of y'all got close, they shout, "Avery, man!" And then all of a sudden, "Hey, you bad pastor, like, you..." Can I give you this? I'm gonna preach this right. You don't know what Paul could say in Acts, chapter number ten? "Look how stupid, how hard I worked being stupid just to get the salvation of God." Anybody there? God strikes Paul down. And he says, "Saul, Saul, why persecute thou me?" Hell, I can't, we got Bible readers. I got about five of them, yeah. Read the Bible, it's all about it. Saul, Saul, why talk so nicely to me? He said, "Saul, Saul, why persecutest thou me?" Why go, listen to this. Hey, can I ask you something? Don't raise your hand, do not raise your hand, third time, don't raise your hand. Are you saved? I got four folks on my left here. Hey, I'm telling you, I wouldn't face worrying about my bills if I didn't know I was saved. I wouldn't take a test at school. I wouldn't get in a car covered with glass, metal, gasoline, and oil. Anybody with me? I wouldn't go to the doctor's office. Well, why? Why? Here's why, Brody. Why in the world could I trust God to take care? Can I tell you why that youngin', this one in the pink shirt, everybody see him? Why that youngin' can trust God to take care of his mama? You ready for this? Because he trusted God to take care of his soul. And if God can take care of his heaven and eliminate his hell, God ought to be able to take care of his mama. But I ain't gonna lie to you, babe. If God has not taken care of what I cannot see, how in the world can I trust him to take care of what I can see? Can I tell you why that one right there, Charlie? Can I tell you why he has trusted God to take care of whatever hell is going on with him? We all met over at house a long time ago. Everybody's telling a testimony, and I looked at Charlie, and I said, "Charlie." And I asked everybody else, I said, "Have you been saved?" And I looked at Charlie, and I said, "Charlie, have you..." And he looked at me, he said, "Let me tell you about it." And he gave me his testimony. Can I give you this? I'm not gonna trust God with what showed up on CAT scan if I'm not trusting God with my eternity. Well, I say, amen, right? Y'all might go, "Like, Chase, that's good preaching, buddy, amen." You ever wondered how many bottles of beer you went through? Before you realized you could trust God? You ever wondered how many hearts you broke? You ever wondered how many tears were shed because of your arrogance, of your rebellion? Before you realized you could trust God? Chase is the shout of the message, I gotta believe this, I'm not done yet on the altar tonight. What you say? I'm saying, "When you get back, you'll feel better." You ever wonder? I got a kid with a species pet in my class, and he looked at my goatee that I'm attempting to grow. And he looked at me, he kept looking at it, and he said, "One, two, three, four. You got four and a half white hails in your wheel." "Are you that blessed?" And I looked at him, I said, "It gets worse every day." And he looked at me, and he said, "Mr. Chase, if we're blessing you out, I can tell them to calm down." I said, "But they got a lot more than they can tell us, dude." Ever wondered how many grays you got? How many lack of hairs you got? How many sleepless nights you got? All because you didn't have the peace of God that was within arms' reach. That was one bend of the knee, one bow of the head, one submission of the heart, one let go and let God. You ever wondered how many arguments you've had over, "God, I need an answer, I need an answer." And God said, "I gave you your answer a long time ago." "My God, I need an answer." And God said, "I already gave it to you." "Lord, I've been a week with my eyes out, I've been a ground, my eyes out." And God said, "I gave you peace a long time ago. I gave you a shout a long time ago. I gave you a help a long time ago. I gave you, I called you to preach. I gave you a shout. I gave you your purpose, and you're still asking me, can I have my freedom? I need to have my bondage. I haven't even been dead. Fred, listen to me. You wasting time when you could be taking time living in my faith." Let's get right closer. You may not have the word, but you can do the word. You got your Bible, it's last place we're looking at now, brothers. Second Thessalonians, if you got your Bible on. First Thessalonians, I pause down, First Thessalonians, chapter five. First Thessalonians, chapter five, you can fill them close and nice bill it there. Some of y'all, I thought I skipped it, I think it's that third one. I wanna give you biblical lyrics, I wanna tell this to forty-seven people in the house. Well, Chase, there's only forty-four here, I'm telling you, there's thirty-three more here. Paul would give us this. "Examine yourself to see whether you've been able to make your mark." From right here all the way to Jessica Brim, from right here, Jessica Brim, from Jay back to Dakota. I want you to ask yourself, "Am I saved?" Am I saved? Chase, we got my son, he's down. Hey, can I say this to you? I walk up to my birth mama, and I say, "Mama, am I your son?" Isn't it gonna take her six months to look at me and say, "Yes." "God, I need, I need to check, I need you to check the blood one more time." And you all know what God will do? I saved you then, and I'm still happy to have you now. Second question. Am I trusting God? Am I trusting God? Am I trusting God? And the last question I wanna ask is this. What are you doing while you wait? What are you doing while you wait? First Thessalonians, chapter five. Verse number fifteen. "See that none render evil unto any man, but ever follow that which is good, both among yourselves and all men." People are putting down the church. "You may not have the words to be able to stand for God in time of trouble, but you can do the work, not lead God." For example, I talk to people all the time, they don't understand why. But you wanna know what they tell me? I'm not giving up. You may not have the words, but you can still do the work. Verse sixteen, two words. "Rejoice evermore." Some, some of y'all look around, I got a Bible on, that's fine. Come here. You look sharp, now, Mom, you did good on me. Okay, good, good. I'm gonna see, I'm gonna, you got your, you got your deep voice on? You don't speak real loud. Bring those two words. Everybody all right?
Yeah.
You got, you got your land of more voice on you? Not that one. "Rejoice evermore." Come sit with me, niece. You got your mad voice? That basketball voice, you ready? Those two right there. Hey, Randy, do you hear that? Come here, come here, come here, come here. Can you do me a favor? And here comes Grace, absolutely Grace, I'll take that, come here, girl. Hey, can you do me a favor? Look back. Does she call you Papa, what she call you, Ross? Avery. Papa. Can you look back there? 'Cause he needs to hear you. Tell Papa, say Papa. Rejoice evermore. God bless you, see you. Come here, Grace, come here, sit right. You've got, you've got a good voice. You got, you got one of them. No, don't say that, amen. All right. So, I'm gonna say it to you, and you look out there and you tell all of them, you ready? Big voice. You remember that one time you got baptized? You, you got on the band, you remember that? Yeah, I need that same voice. Tell all these people. Tell your mom and dad. Say, "Rejoice evermore." God bless you, see you, hello. What are you doing while you wait? Chase, same, rejoicing. We got a biblical problem here. Hey, can I give you something? Esther is the only, Billy, you help me on this one if I'm right. Esther's the only book in the Bible that God has not mentioned. Nine'll beat you to it, nine of us ready. You all know why nine of us ready? 'Cause if I'd been wrong, Bob would've met me in the office. He'd have curled that finger and said, "Come here, son." But help me with this, all you Esther fans. God has brought you to this place for such a time as this. You wanna know what you have in the book of Esther? You've got no God working in front of the camera, but Billy, you've got God working behind the scenes. Are you saved? Do you trust God? And what are you doing while you wait? First, uh, First Thessalonians, chapter five, verse seventeen. "Pray without..." Hey, we got new members in our church. Hey, come here, Cory. Come sit with me, lady. I was thinking the other day, everybody all right? I was thinking the other day. 'Cause, hey, if anybody wants to blame somebody for why we having this little weekend meeting, you blame Rex Crockett. Rex Crockett opened his mouth on stage a few weeks ago and said, "When we having revival?" No, I'm teaching. Hey, God spoke good. Dakota and I went to Honey Creek a couple of weeks ago, God spoke good to my heart that night. I was thinking today, God, we've got so many new folks coming in. What's something we all need to do? Hey, Cory, I want you to read Good Loud Voice, give them verse set up, can you? "Pray without ceasing." I wanna give you something about that. What's something everybody in this church, needs everybody in this church to do? Tell them again.
Pray without ceasing.
Charles, what's that little boy's name? Rorik, right? What's Rorik's name? He needs this entire church to...
Pray without ceasing.
My little daughter right there. What's she need this entire church to do? Go ahead.
Pray without ceasing.
Josh and Sarah Ramey's got one baby saved so far. And the one thing that Josh and Sarah need is in our church to do. If they gonna see the rest of that house saved, go ahead and tell them.
Pray without ceasing.
Well, we got kids that are missing in our church. What do they need? They don't even know they need an amber, but what do they need? Tell them.
Pray without ceasing.
Colby and Talara are down in Georgia right now. And Talara still tells me, she's watching right now. Talara still tells me, South Harbor's the only church I've ever felt God in. And Talara can't drive fifteen hours every Sunday. But you all know what Talara needs?
Pray without ceasing.
I say, "Rory." Boy, what's our elders in the... Chase, I just, we've got so many new people, I don't know where my part is in the church. Can I tell you where your part is? Rejoice evermore and...
Pray without ceasing.
Dakota's been talking to me, he's got an appointment next Thursday. He said, "Chase, I ain't had time to get to the word a whole lot this week." You all know what Dakota needs to do?
Pray without ceasing.
I don't know if anybody else is close to her, but I'm thinking about running. Where's Tommy Lunch when you need him? Amen. We got two verses to go, can you handle it? In every, hey, be honest. But I'm almost done, honey. How many of you struggle with what the will of God is for your life? God bless you. Sorry, you're the first can of salt. Come here, Randy. I'm gonna read this while he's coming. What's the will of God for my life, Jay? What's the will of God? I need to know what God wants for me. Verse eighteen. "In everything give thanks, for this is the will of God and Jesus Christ concerning you." If that's one thing Chase believes in the house of God, it's worship. Why? All I want is in everything, give thanks, that's all I want. Why? Because there's something we can do at all times, and you all know what it is? Because there's something we can do at all times, you'll know what it is? In everything, give thanks. Kayla Large apologized to our church a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, and you'll know something she said that is stuck in my soul. Every day, I've not been who your kids need me to be. What do we need? In everything, give thanks. Last thing we'll read is this, next verse says this. And quench not the spirit. Paul would give us two charges. Don't grieve the spirit, and don't quench the spirit. What's the difference? Quench the spirit is when God says yes, and we say no. Grieve the spirit is when God says no, and we say yes. But God just got them to tell us, rejoice evermore, pray without ceasing, and in everything, give thanks. And then he follows it. That's me telling you yes. Don't you dare tell me no. Ain't that God, ain't that good? Rob, if you and, uh, if you and Miss Holly, Lord. Lord, hear my heart. I preach your heart now, I pray you're gonna help me. I ain't gonna lie, I'm starting to like this sweating house stuff. Yes, can see Phoenix do something, that's good. I mean, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna move forward, that's good. I'll tell them, I think it's beginning to go, we probably ain't gonna do that. I, I wanna, I wanna give invitation this way. How many of you heard some preaching when you were a kid that you found it hard to accept? It was Bible, it's there, but I don't Uncle Ben, and some of y'all know that man. Uncle Ben was stained by a black gum, and he beat that pulpit, and he say, "Children!" And that used to mess me up too, cause he only had three kids, all of us ain't kids. Children! Being a Christian ain't hard. Bible says we have tracts that's hard. And I looked at him, and I, one time I got enough nerve to look at him, and say, "Uncle Ben, do you not know about me, Shaq Shaq Blackbent, though?" Well, that wasn't easy, Uncle Ben. For their tracts. I don't know, I don't know. Chase, I don't understand why some people never give up on their faith. And why I find it so hard just to even say his name. There's months and months I don't even think about it. Can I ask you something? It's easy for you to give up on your faith if you've never had faith that won't give up on you. Did you get that? Sure? Did you get that? I'm gonna repeat that one again. Hey, sorry, not sorry. It's real easy to get out of church and stay out if you've never had something that was gonna get you to heaven. Well, Chase, I just don't know why folks don't come back to church, I tell you why. They had religion, never had Jesus. And y'all know something real difficult? Folks, just admit, hey, I've been in church all my life, but I've never been saved. Can I give you something to like about the harbor? And I'm zoning in on Oliver Colton, done. Can I give you something to like about Oliver Colton? It's been a little while, well, the race was our last one. It's been a little while since we've had a little company saved. Well, Chase, why do you like that? Because teenagers are realizing, I need Jesus. We've got adults that are realizing, I need Jesus. You'll know something that amazes me, Amber, and I mean this, I don't wanna embarrass her, but no means. I tell folks that we've had teenagers get something, that's good, good, good. But I tell folks that we have a mom get saved. And you all, ready? Well, why do you think they act like that? Because everybody just thinks, folks that are adults, I'll be warned again by now. I mean, I got there, been 30, like 30, 40, 50. I gotta wonder how many people care we think that have their lives together that are hanging on by a thread? Well, I'll preach one deeper. I gotta wonder how many people think we've got our lives all together? And dear God, if they knew what was between our ears? Hey, I wanna ask our teenagers in the house, and I know most of you tested, and you already saved. Have you ever got your life? Well, Chase, I can't do nothing to get saved. Can I tell you what you can't do? You can put your faith in Jesus. God, I'm here, I'm sorry for every sin of mine, I trust you, I'm giving you my love. And you know what God will give you in return? He'll give you himself. Is that right? Some of y'all leaving, is that right? I'll ask for teenagers. Whatever you've got going on, and I wanna say this, Charlie ain't going on struggling. He ain't going on that's normal killing church. Whatever you've got going on, are you trusting God? Can I give you one reason I, I, I like South Harbor so much? I'm in, you okay? We got kids in this house that have got bio parents that they don't talk to, and we've got kids that've got stepparents, and we've got kids that've got messed up home lines. Dear God, I get that. Yeah, right there with you. But you'll know something that got to do with that? You gotta trust God with it. Can you hear me? I wanna talk to the adults now, are you saved? Are you saved? Well, it's important, though, to say, because Karen, here's the facts. If I trusted Jesus to get me out of hell and to trust him to put me in heaven, I can trust him to whatever's here. I want us to play catch-up tonight, from the back to the front. I want us to play catch-up tonight. If lately you've spent too much time between years, if you've spent too much time in your negative feels, if you've spent too much time in skepticism, spent too much time down the dunks, I believe it's time for us to figure out what we're gonna do while we wait. God, there's a lot of time that you've spent being good to me that I've spent not acknowledging. And Lord, straight from my heart, I wanna thank you. Here tonight, the lost, need to be saved, those folks that come pray with you. If you're here tonight, need to come be on the altar and just give it to God, and capture it, Karen, then do that. If you're here, then come talk to him. Why don't we do that? Let's stand tonight, if you would, I'll listen.
Sometimes I feel no one's ever been in this place before. This is hard, and I'm not sure that I can do this anymore.
I'm gonna go to admit it, with God, there's saints, and that's fine. You can't be all of us on the road. You can be with God, though. You can be with God.
Lord, right now, I need you to know just how I feel when there are no words to say and a prayer that I can pray.
You don't need to pray for patience, you need to trust God.
When I don't have strength to try and I'm crying all night and crying here in my heart.
Family troubles, need to trust God. Health devils, need to trust God. Things you're not telling people about, need to trust God. Charles, what are you doing?
Every now and then, I recall a simple phrase or melody.
I'll be honest. Well, you might feel lonely in your struggles, and you might know you're not alone. But you might just want to feel people praying, you want your God. Joe's jealousy, yeah. I'll listen. Bless you, Zach. Folks, just pray, exactly, and fill your needs, and that's fine. I wanna say this, can folks still instill this, I'm still with you? Boy, look at the miles you've been down. Look at the hardships, look at the struggles. And you should have peace through it all. And can I give you this? You might have peace in soul, but you need peace of mind. Paul went through all these years working to feel good enough, working to feel accepted. And all Paul had to do was submit to God, that was it. That was it. That was it. I'm gonna preach deep right here. It's not about a competition in your family. It's not about you being the black sheep. It's not about you being blessed then. It's not about you being good enough. This is my promise, this is God's promise. You get accepted by God, you'll have peace to know in Him, you're good enough. You're good enough. Boy, somebody speaks tonight. Somebody tell me. And hey, you'll know what's needed, it's just us. It's just us. It's just us. You might not have the words to say to God, but you can do the work to put your heart in His hands. We're here for you. Hey, it's something, I, I, I wanna give Harper this before Holly says one last verse. I got a good feeling we'll be here tomorrow night, and I don't think whoever's gonna do anything calls us not to. I don't know about Sunday morning. So, this is what I'm telling you. Wouldn't be a thing if God called tonight just to help you. Let's sing one last time, Jay. Go ahead, Josh.
I don't, I don't go that far, and I don't, I don't think I did, but that is that was just on my heart, and I, I just went home.
Go for it, Tony.
Trust me. James, Billy. Mary.
Folks, may they be good.
For me, I needed to see. I needed, needed to see and have proof of people that were elders and leaders of this church that would guide me and lead me in the ways I needed to go, that would support me, that would pray for me. When would you pray? For anybody out here? Would you pray? Billy? James? Ron? I ain't begging you to come. Right here. Right there. They pray for me. They give me the plan to stand for your need.
Go ahead, Billy.
They help strengthen me and give me the boldness to stand and preach to your families, to my kids. They, they empower me with, with the Holy Spirit in a way that I could never attain without the support of you. You don't have to come, but I trust these men. I trust our pastor, I trust our singers, I trust the ones that are saved, I trust of this body of born again baptized believers. And if you need somebody to trust, we're here for you.
That's right. Same. Let us help you, let us pray with you. Come on. Come on, same says. Now, we'll come pray by yourself, ask somebody.
Every now and then
You move word. It's just us. Say one more, Jay.
When there are no words
You talk to God, and try to watch your name. We got the building, we got the building, break three south, come on.
When I don't have strength to try
You're a winner, that's a way with it. Let's go to God together. Bless you, girls. Now, bless God, who loves you.
Sometimes I feel no one's ever been in this place before. And this is hard. And I'm not sure that I can do this anymore. I don't stop the hour of death. And all this far secret. Lord, right now I need you to know just how I feel. When there are no words to say and a prayer that I can pray in my heart. When I don't have strength to try and I'm crying all night and crying in my heart. Cause you know every fear and every doubt I cannot speak. You know all the ways I need you. And you're always I need. So I'll be quiet. So you can hear my heart. Every now and then I recall a simple phrase or melody. The comfort hurts and it quite and it's me up and then it carries me. Far around the pain and hurt I think will never end. The song speaks words I cannot and it helps the fears within. When there are no words to say and a prayer that I can pray in my heart. When I don't have strength to try and I'm crying all night and crying in my heart. Cause you know every fear and every doubt I cannot speak. You know all the ways I need you. And all the ways I need. So I'll be quiet. So you can hear my heart. Lord, I'll be quiet. So you can hear my heart.
I'm gonna give you what I believe. These folks got help tonight. Let's testify. You can do that. You can do it. You can let out what God's put in. But I wanna say this. I believe in church after church. Don't you? I mean, sorry to let you out, but Zach came up and he out of church back to Thanksgiving meeting. He said, hey, bro, need to talk to you. I, I looked at him. What? Cause hey, just cause, just cause the parent figure said, hey, my kid needs to do this. It's still up with the kid. And he said, I need to talk about getting saved. I need it. Hey, listen. If you felt God talk to you tonight about salvation, I'd encourage you. Hey, Arnold, let's talk after talk. Talk to somebody. Talk to somebody. Amen. Does that got any feeling, Charlie?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Get ready. We can pray for him with him. Amber's not been alone in her struggle. Zach won't be alone in his. We're ready. Chase, church got a lot of burden down there. You can believe this, or you can drop it. You are not a burden in this church. And it'll help you believe that. Church, Chase, how much can the church handle? We can handle every God wants to step. Can. Sure can. I say, Miss Dean, I mean well. It's not about the word. It's about the work. And I, I, I pray you hear me on this. No matter what you put on the altar tonight, trusting God with your salvation is a one-time experience. But trusting God with your worries or threats, your hell continual. You wanna know what it is? It's a progress and it's a process. You wanna know what you'll have to do tonight before you go to bed? Give it to God. Hey, when you wake up middle of the night, the devil says, hey, this is when you're supposed to wake up, middle of the night, be real worried. Hey, God? Hey, God? It's yours. Take you some deep breaths. Go back to sleep. Hurt, Billy. Tomorrow, it's, it's that time when you're supposed to eat, but you're not enabled to eat in a while. Just look at God and say, Adam will trust you. And all of a sudden, that bloody sandwich, it'll look good. Y'all ain't even in that. I believe that's right. Well, Chase, you ain't hungry. I'm starved of death. Amen. These low smoke got help tonight. Anybody else need to testify, speak the goodness of God.
Chase, I just have to say like the last ten months, within the last thirty-seven years, I've never known in my whole life what the power of prayer can really do. Until the last ten months, I died to the spirit with power of prayer. And I'm gonna say, there's something truly alive that I haven't believed in until like here. That's the spirit too.
Yep. Sure do.
Cause if we got those, that's on people's hearts.
Yep.
And they know people who know.
Absolutely.
So if you know somebody that eats, pray for them.
Yep. You may. Anything else on show? Amen. God bless you. Let's stand together in the wood tonight. One blessing being the house of God. Hey, Charles? Come here. Hey, I'm looking forward to tomorrow night at seven o'clock. I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited about it. And surely, surely, hang on. I knew this meeting was on my soul, but they, they some things on my heart. Got to see them tonight. I'm excited. Well, Chase, wow. And, and you helped me with this. Y'all folks, it's carried burden for. If y'all gonna put somebody on your heart, he's got plans on doing something big with it. I'm excited. I wanna get my throat sprained out now. I wanna get ready to shout more. Folks, is that, you ready? You know what to do? Charlie? Tell him he can do it. Tell him. Yeah, you got it. Ready? Chase. King God?
God bless you.
Lord help.
He's helping.
Who did?
God did.
God bless you. We'll see you tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Go break up, Brandon.